Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, April 8th, 2015 Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Raymond. The planning board will come to order. The board does have a quorum and roll call. Start with you.
Greg Foster.
Robert O'Neil.
Bruce Stanford.
Steve Laney.
Benjamin Brader.
And Jim Seymour is our contract planner and Danielle's working the keyboards. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all of the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the chairman if you are unable to hear or to see. The board works from a published agenda and will be considering tonight's items in the following order. The first order of business is the minutes from the February 11th meeting, then a review and discussion of shoreland zoning standards and the finding of facts for the Fry Island application, followed by a public hearing and application review for a private road extension, and then any plan or communications. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinances. After the board votes on the merits of each project application, it will prepare a written notice of decision because the notice of decision may substantially affect any appeal rights. And also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the board has completed its discussion on the project. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the appropriate appeals board of superior court as otherwise provided by law within 30 days of this board's decision. Also, to be certain that you preserve your individual rights to file any such appeal, you must be certain that this board records evidence of your appearance this evening. All persons speaking, including the representative of the applicant and members of the public, are asked to stand, address, state their name, address an affiliation with the project, also to do so from the podium so we can get you on camera. You must sign. All persons speaking shall address the chairman. Okay. First up, the minutes.
On the second page, and I was actually hoping Mark was here, so help me. The reference is my question about the stormwater permit. I think this might be reversed because I thought the answer I got out of Mark was that they had approval for the current design, but they had not submitted it for the previous design. That's why we couldn't go back and consider the previous design.
Correct.
And this is turned around.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What page is that on?
It's on the second page, just above conditions. That paragraph above conditions.
It's actually right below the conditions.
So that would actually change that to say, Mr. Gray, and Mr. Gray, that they did not have approval for the previous design, but did have approval for the applicant, the application that was requested approval for.
Yep.
Application, not applicant. Yeah.
Anything else? Danielle, I just got a couple of typos, but I'll give those to you.
I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Question passes. Carrie. Next up is our, I guess Mary is not going to make it.
Danielle, you heard from Mary?
Have you heard from Mary?
She said she was coming.
All right.
You want to flip it or you want to just take the majority vote or?
Um, yeah, why not?
Nope.
Jeez, look at that. Everybody right on, right at the buzzer.
Talk about it.
Yeah, just keep it going.
We just got.
I had the same thing for me ten minutes ago. He said my name and I walked in the door.
All right, so to bring the board up to speed on the discussion, it appears that when we went through the item-by-item votes for the Fry Island, remember we did this under the two land and shoreland, we did a series of store votes in, I guess, a couple of meetings ago, but never had an official vote, on the nine topics that, or eight topics actually, that are in the finding of fact that Jim prepared for us.
Those are also located, Chairman, on page 51 of 70 in the ordinance.
Yes, okay. So this evening, while we really have discussed all of these at length and have reached a decision on them, we have no formal vote on them. So we need to go through those eight items, get a vote on the record, and then we can discuss the finding of facts. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Does everybody have the email from Jim?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we're looking at those bottom, I think the bottom eight. We already did the vote on number nine. So Mary, a quick question. We were discussing before you got here, can we lump all these into one vote or should we go individually since we've gone individually with the others?
Should go individually.
Individual, okay. That's, I think, that was the betting line. What's the feeling of the board here? Do you want to just kind of whip through these or do you want to?
No.
I don't really see a real reason to have, do all discussion again, right?
No.
No, okay.
Been through them once already.
Since I have it in front of me.
I guess I might as well consider them one by one.
Yeah, that's what Mary just said. So I move that the Fry Island application as presented will maintain safe and healthful conditions.
Second.
Unless anybody wants a discussion, let me just go right to the vote through all these. So if someone wants discussion.
I don't think it does because of the confluence of the emergency access and the pedestrian walkway, so I'm certainly not going to vote to support that.
And that was consistent with your.
Probably understood.
Yeah. All right, so all those in favor? And all opposed? So, four to one.
I'm motioning to second it.
I'm motioning to second it. Next, I will move that the application as presented will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters.
Second.
If there is no discussion, we'll go right to the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie's five, zero. I move that the application as presented will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. No discussion, we'll go right to the vote.
I'll second.
Well, second, thank you. Going too fast. All those in favor? Five, zero. I move that the application as presented will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife habitat.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, zero, five, zero. I move that the application as presented will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters.
Second.
Got to be a little faster, Bruce. All those, no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, zero. I move that the application as presented will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan.
Second.
No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, zero. I move that the application as presented will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or marine activities in the Commercial Fisheries Maritime Activities District.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed. Where is our maritime activities district? I move that the application will avoid problems associated with the floodplain development and their use.
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, zero. And I move, oh, okay. So I think we've already done. Do we need another vote on nine again?
We've already done.
No, we've already done that. Okay. So now, Mary, our question for you is can we go to the finding of facts now and complete that and for signature or do we need to wait? We get, even though it is not actually, it's going to get to be modified by putting in the votes that we actually took this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. In that case, then you do have some, right? Some typos.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
We're in discussion on finding a fact.
On page four, the, third paragraph, starting the board discussed with Mary, the second to the last line, I am concerned I disagree with the statement that this clearly meets the ordinance intent. There are a number of us on the board that did not feel that it clearly met the ordinance. I know you do, but I don't think we did, and that's the reason why we went the route of the waiver. I'm concerned that leaving that in basically undermines the ordinance as it is, saying that having a driveway not within 300 feet in, with some modifications, you're saying this clearly meets the ordinance intent. And I personally disagreed with that from the beginning, and I think there's others.
So you want stricken the word clearly?
I, the whole thing. I don't think it even, I don't think it meets the ordinance intent. Then that's why we went the route of a waiver. Because if it did clearly meet the ordinance intent, we didn't need a waiver.
You're talking about the paragraph that starts with the board discussed, right?
Right, and that's the, I guess it's the last sentence. "The design to provide a safe passage of pedestrians directly across from the access to the associated use clearly meets the ordinance intent."
Well, let me just explain a little bit. The waiver standards are about protecting pedestrian safety. And so the idea was you are waiving the requirement to have a driveway located within 300 feet. And the reason why you waived it is because the pedestrian access isn't 830 feet away. It is within 300 feet. And that was the basis of the waiver. You waived the distance because the pedestrians were actually close, so you didn't need that distance.
That's not really why I voted to waive it.
But that is the rationale, that was the rationale. That was explained at the time, and that's what actually you did vote on. It is what you voted on because that was what was explained.
What did you think we voted, I mean, what was your interpretation?
No, I mean that we were waiving the 300. I still don't think that it clearly meets the ordinance intent because we did have discussion over what the ordinance intent was, and there were numbers that disagreed. I just feel that you're undermining the ordinance by leaving this in the findings of fact. And I don't think it, I don't, that's just my, that's my opinion.
But at the time, that was what you did vote on, that the reason for the waiver, you waived the 300-foot distance because the pedestrians were not 830 feet away, they were right across the street. And so the intent of the 300-foot distance is so that pedestrians aren't walking very far, and that's the intent. And so by waiving the 300, you're not making people walk 830 feet, you're saying they can walk just right across the street, so.
I think that is, and that is the intent. We agreed that was the intent of the ordinance at the time, was not, the intent, and I think even when we put, when we voted on the ordinance way back, our goal in putting that in was so that pedestrians wouldn't be walking for long, you know, long ways on a day.
Does this, I'm worried considering for future projects, does this affect future projects and create a loophole?
Not at all.
Case by case.
It's a one-time waiver.
I mean, no, it's a statement. No, I understand the one-time waiver, but I'm saying the statement.
The statement, in this case, you're saying there is pedestrian access from this parking lot directly across the street from the accessway for the associated use? And because of that, you're waiving the requirement that the driveway access for vehicles needs to be within 300 feet. I don't, if that same exact scenario came up with a different project, that would be the precedent, but if something different comes up, it's not setting a precedent for anything other than this exact situation.
All right.
Okay. Not happy, but okay?
Yeah.
All right. Welcome to Greg's world.
Yeah.
I'll go on record as saying that I agree with Steve, and I'll go a little bit farther. I think, again, by the board approving the emergency driveway in confluence with the pedestrian walkway, if the emergency vehicles do have to access that pedestrian walkway, any pedestrians will have to walk 830 feet while the emergency vehicles are responding to an emergency. Anybody that's walking to the ferry landing is going to be walking 830 feet. And so we have created an unsafe condition, and that is in violation of the intent of the ordinance. And I'm getting it, still in.
Still. Yep. Okay.
You're making me happy by just getting rid of the clearly.
Was that?
Well, yeah, you just got rid of the clearly. Because in your case, you just gave, you gave it a situation where it doesn't.
No, it doesn't meet the ordinance intent. It doesn't, doesn't create a safe and healthy condition.
We can get rid of the word clearly if that gets up to the board.
We can massage it legally however we want, but it's wrong.
Well, you were in the minority vote. This decision represents the majority vote.
No, I understand that, but it's still wrong.
All right.
Now, my concern is just for our future projects. I just want to make sure that the ordinance is still in place and still defendable and.
And I think we are there. I mean, I think the clearly is not that big of an issue. If you feel more comfortable without it, I think we could strike it. And is that, I mean, it's, yeah.
Sure.
Is that, would that be, that made you happier?
Yeah.
All right, let's strike it.
So we're just striking the word clearly?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Hey, you had a word.
Personally, I don't see where striking the word clearly changes the statement of the sentence.
It doesn't, that's why we struck the word clearly.
Trying to make me happy.
Still in the minority, Bruce.
Okay, whatever.
Any other discussion on the finding of facts besides Mark's not here? Is Mark here? No.
Natalie's here.
Natalie's here.
I was just, it was, it's cleared up, and I guess it was some, at first I was confused about the extension, but it is clearly, they've got two years to start construction and three years they have to complete.
Right.
Because, yeah.
Three years in total.
Three years in total.
From the date of approval.
It's just written differently in two different places.
Right, that's what, at first I was confused.
It says the same, yep.
And the motion should be as amended because you put the votes in.
Anybody else want to, discussion? So I would, I move that we accept the finding of facts for the major site plan and shoreland zoning application from Fry Island Parking Lot and Ride Facility as amended this evening.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One. So we will sign and then we get to go.
Can we do the single-sided one and then we can.
When do they actually have to produce the mylar's for signature and any of that? Because they don't have anything truly designed, right?
No, they haven't, but they haven't, you haven't signed it yet. You can sign the findings of fact, but it's on them to still, they can't get any building permits or do anything.
Right, because we haven't really seen any, any detailed design on the, as far as the Raymond Cave.
But that was a condition of the approval.
Okay.
But that has to be approved by the Public Works Director.
All right.
Still have the maintenance, so we have a condition as well? We have a, we have.
There's a, there's a, there's a whole list on there, so.
Yes.
Those all have to be done before they can get issued any building permits.
Okay, that could take up to two years.
All right. Well, thanks, Mary. I figured it'd be more, more than that.
Sure. You're welcome.
Okay, next we will go to the Rusty Partridge and Scott and Jane Maxwell application on the Shore Road for the private road extension. We'll first have a, Jim will introduce the project, then who is presenting for the applicant?
Hi. I'm just saying we're doing the application.
Okay, great, Chris. So Jim will give us a brief overview, then I'll ask if you want to say anything about the application, and then we'll open the public hearing and then turn it over to the board. Just give me a second, Mr. Chairman. Ready.
All right, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members, before you is a project of Scott and Jane Maxwell located on Tax Map 3, Lot 12. It is for a lot division and extension of a private road located on the end of Shaw Road. Shaw Road is a private road. The applicant has come forth to extend the private road 380 feet to obtain frontage to divide the existing parcel such that he may have another family lot for a single-family residence. The parcel is located in the LRR2 zone with the extension of the road as shown on your plans. It accommodates both the frontage for the proposed lot and the existing lot. There'll be a hammerhead design meeting town standards on the existing, I'll call it the existing Maxwell lot, where the driveway going to the existing home comes off the hammerhead. The applicant has provided stormwater calculations where they've provided treatment of the stormwater in the proposed lot using wooded buffers and meadow buffers. There's level lip spreaders and using our point systems, I believe they are now up to 65 points with the revisions that I saw as of this morning. Pretty clear cut, there's frontage on Sebago Lake. It's in the shoreline zone as we've discussed. The home will sit back more than 100 feet, so it's not in the resource protection zone. It's pretty straightforward. We've done private roads extensions like this before. The actual private road itself will have to be signed and recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and I think that's pretty much it. I know the gentleman is here tonight to discuss this. George Sawyer here, the engineer's here to discuss anything, I think, with regards to stormwater. We did request as conditions that we look at the private road and any damage done to Shaw Road will be repaired at the applicant's expense, as well as making sure that there's a maintenance agreement in place for the new lot to come on to the, to the road. So I would offer the applicant opportunity to further present the project and take questions.
Jim, the plan through a hammerhead, is that what it's saying?
Yes.
Reason we're doing that?
For emergency turnaround, to dead end.
Oh, it's a dead end? This road doesn't continue?
No. No, it currently, if you look at the plan now, it comes down to the current lot and then it takes a hard left if you're coming down the road, and there's a small 25 right away that goes to the property on the other side of the street. Shaw Road had access through the end of Shaw Road, but to get frontage for the second lot, he needed to extend it to the original parcel.
And we looked at that, is this the same, did we look at this application not that long ago?
No.
Is that a different, this is a different one?
Different. No, I think you're thinking of the one we might have done from Autumn Lane, very similar.
Yes, that's it, okay. Chris?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. My name is Chris Nagel. I am here for Scott and Jane. I admit to being an attorney, but I'm more proud of the fact I've been a member of the Cumberland Planning Board for more than 10 years, and I appreciate the amount of time you guys have to put in. I will also say that I hate it when the lawyers show up at planning board meetings, and I will do my best to act like one. Jim pretty much explained the project. George Sawyer, who did the stormwater stuff, is here to answer those kind of questions I wouldn't touch him. The builder, Rusty Partridge, who's kind of been the point, is here with us to talk about questions. It's a pretty simple request, let me try and put it in some context. Board information, I just want to, you know, the only, only client I have an interest in, the entire parcel. Yes, we bought this 14, 15 years ago in 2000. It's absolutely a beautiful piece of property, and this is far from survey, plenty of, put it in some Flint text. They own that cross-hashed land, 12-plus acres. Since they bought that, they actually own the, if you look below the Turtle Cove, that's the end of Sheen's Island, they actually own that parcel of land too. And if you look across to the right with that double-humped piece of land, they have actually acquired that as well. So, but this, they're separate deeds, separate properties, they don't touch each other. We're talking about this parcel of land, and what they want to do is they wanted to add a guest house. They didn't, they don't want a separate lot, they just want to add a guest house, and that's how it got started. Pretty soon, Chris Hansen and probably working with Jim suggested we should have a separate lot, just, even though the ordinance, the shoreline ordinance suggests you could have multiple parcels, there is a piece of your land use code that says a principal building has to be on its own lot. I'm not here to argue whether or not a guest house is a principal building. We're not here to, Maxwell's not the kind of people to make waves. If you have one. So I guess what I'd like you to do in the package, there's a plan called the Private Street Extension in your package, I hope.
It's the one from Owen Haskell, correct?
Yes. Yes. That's the one we're going to ask you to sign.
Yep, yep. Chris, could you bring it here and then the camera could actually catch it?
I'll put it wherever you want to.
Thanks, I don't know, we used to have one there.
Well, George has done this one.
This one was real slick.
All right.
Put Mark's name if you left.
Yeah. Take it as it's still in here.
No, no.
A little fact, just a little bit, so it's like in front of the street, yeah.
There we go.
Perfect.
See if the audience, see if they're situated properly.
Correct. Thanks, Chris.
So, this is not their entire property. Their entire property goes all over here, my knowledge.
Chris, now we're going to bug you one more time and ask you to use the mic. And then, and then we'll let you continue.
We'd add people to it.
Yeah. Sorry.
All right, one more time, this plan doesn't show their entire property, it shows the, I guess, the western side of it. Down here are the improvements that are shown more crudely on that mortgage inspection plan I just gave you, okay, to give you some orientation. This is mostly an open meadow with some, I call them moderately dense woods up in here. And the basic idea is to create a three-plus acre lot, I think it's 319 acres. And to do that, to get frontage, we need to extend the private road up here. And so it's really a paper, there's no new road that's going to be built because their existing road comes in like this, takes a corner naturally, comes down by the edge of the meadow down to their residential complex. And they're going to build the driveway down through here to a residence roughly down in here.
Can we do this so we can see what's going? Do we need to talk about?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'll go over that again. They're going to build the driveway down here, I'll show you on a plane in a second, and there also is going to be a second driveway that goes over here, because I said this, they're going to, they're going to use this as a guest house.
Okay.
And they just want to be able to easily travel between the two. Okay? So we're asking you to approve the extension of the private road up here such that they can create a new three-acre lot, leaving themselves a nine-plus acre lot. It's not a subdivision because it's only two lots, and they've owned it for 15 years. So I think the road issues are pretty straightforward, where there's been a lot of work and some last-minute changes has been to the stormwater buffers.
deals. Everything that we, that comes in has to come in 10 days before, so we have an opportunity to review it before the actual meeting. We have found through numerous prob, numerous errors along the way encountered by when we just don't have enough time, you know, the applicant gives us things and we just don't have enough time to adequately review it, and it moves through the process before us. So we can only, and we, we will only review what is in the application as it stands. So we will not accept additional stuff from you this evening. We certainly will accept it, and if it's necessary, we'll come back and do it again at the next meeting, but not-
Mr. Chair?
At the board. Yes?
Just so we're clear, what you're actually reviewing is the private road.
Right.
Okay, and what he's presenting actually has no bearing on that road.
That was my next, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a pretty benign revision, I've actually reviewed it already. For your sake of just seeing it, that's one thing, I know you don't want to look at the material, but it really has no bearing on the actual-
Right.
-private road review.
Which is what?
So, okay, let me, and I respect that, Mr. Chairman. First of all, there's been absolutely no change to the private road plan or any of the construction related to the private road itself. Part of an application, and I respect if this is how you want to do it, we'll do it. I just want to tell you what the difference is. I consider it very minor. This image of the proposed, excuse me, folks, can you see okay? This image, this is their lot now with some topos on it, some vegetation outlines on it, same plan you have in there. And this driveway is the same, there's been discussions about engineering up here, there's been discussions about engineering in here, I think we've met all of the town planners' concerns. The change is that when Scott and Jane began to focus on the buffer language and how it was laid out, they realized they wouldn't be able to build a driveway over to their other house. They didn't want to mislead anybody or be back here whenever that happens. So there's been this driveway and a separate parking area has been developed. The result of that was the buffer areas needed to move a little bit, and the stormwater calculations need to be redone. And that has been done, and it certainly was not in Town Hall 10 days ago. So I guess I would characterize it as a minor change to the stormwater element, which is part of the application, and I believe Jim Seymour is on board with the changes, but I'll let him speak for himself.
Yeah, but I think, and, so now, I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think that what's before us today is the private road.
Right.
Right, and not the actual construction of the house.
Right.
Or the development of the property.
The only reason the driveway and things came in was on the stormwater component of it and shoreline zoning.
Right.
And like I said, I've already reviewed this latest model that they presented, and it actually exceeds even more than the original one they did.
Yeah, so, so I don't want, mean to cut you short, but, and I appreciate all the information that you've given us, but we're really only looking at the, the development of the proposed driveway into a private road. That's really the only thing that the board has.
Up here.
Right, and down below, and into the property itself.
Well, I don't think you need to approve this, it's relevant for the stormwater calculations related to the road.
Correct, correct.
Okay, if you're going to build a road, and we're not going to build one, but nonetheless, if you do a private road extension, one of your requirements is that you do a stormwater, phosphorus, and erosion control study, which is what George has done.
Yes, so I, I'm not debating that, I mean, I'm-
Okay. And you, I guess I would say you don't need what I would be willing to give you if, to make a decision today.
Correct, correct. Pleased that you've done it, and it would have needed to be, have done it for everything that you're doing, but not for us-
Correct.
...to take action tonight.
To get a building permit for this project, we need to get this extension approved, and only this extension.
Right, and that's, and that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So staff would, is in charge of the whole building permit for everything else in the lot?
Right.
Right.
And I've incorporated that, I've actually drafted a findings of fact deal this evening, and I've already incorporated everything that they've done the last two days.
Okay, and I, yeah, it's great, I just don't-
Just to streamline everything and not delay it any further.
That's great.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate your willing to, willing to at least keep talking. For example, one of the things Jim, you haven't seen, and Jim is going to have to review as per his memo, is a deed that imposes these restrictions for the three-acre lot, and I've been working on that and working with the town planner.
Yep.
He's going to review it. If you want to add a condition to your approval, should you get that far, that he review and approve any revisions to the stormwater plans, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
And approve the deed. So that's all I have to say. But as I said, the people that really know this project are with me and happy to answer your questions.
Sounds good. All right, so, let's hear some specific questions from the board. You have, Steve?
It has to do with the hammerhead you've got up here at the top of the road extension. I'm looking at this, and kind of, when I looked at it, I went, why? But I'll tell you why I'm saying why. Let's say there's a fire down here at the existing house. Fire trucks are all the way down in there.
Yep.
That hammerhead's not going to do them any good to turn around. They're going to have to back all the way up that driveway.
With the, sir, it's wide open, there's a big driveway, it's a meadow.
What, the existing house-
Down in here.
Yeah. But then what's the- Go back to this. What's the point of the hammerhead?
The hammerhead is a requirement of a private road.
Extension.
Yeah.
After it goes over a lane, after it goes over-
Right, so it's not just that, if it goes down to anywhere down Shaw Road, whether it has to respond to a medical emergency or anything, it gives them a location to turn around. Right now, they have to, you know, do the, the Austin power-
If they were to come down here, as Jim said, the reason this is here is that, oops, I went too far, and they can turn around without going down there and turn around.
The other question I have is, I know there was some concern about the, the grade.
Yes, they revised the grade to 5%.
Okay. I'll leave this here in case.
Yeah, I take it with you.
Just sit on the chair.
Here?
Yes.
Okay, then before, before any more questions, let's hear some general questions. I'll open the, I'll open up the public hearing portion of this evening. If anybody wishes to speak, if you would go to the podium, please state your name and your address and your affiliation. You've got about five minutes or so.
My name's David Lydic, live on 80 Shaw Road. I handle, I call it the pool for the, all the 10 neighbors who I have in that little association we have. It's not association, it's just a pool and the maintenance and director and president of the company and treasurer. Jane, Scott, great neighbors, I want to make that very clear. And, had a little cold, a little horse. I did put in, talked to the neighbors a little bit, and put in about the maintenance that I was concerned about down the road with the construction, with the large construction trucks coming into the area. I had two occasions that I've had to deal with this on the road, because it costs around $59 every time you have Shaw Brothers come down after I repair the road, especially in the springtime. And then when the signs come down and the large 18-year trucks come down that weigh 80,000 pounds, I've had two occasions where the road was totally destroyed. And Jane and Scott, Percy Scott, called me directly and stepped up the plate and took care of the road immediately the very next day, and kept the, make sure the front end logo down there and wanted more gravel. And I don't know how long this construction's going on, because I built in two, probably at some point, built two, two sites, I built my guest house, and I assume that at some point, I heard they're going to be adding, doing something with that main house. So I had concerns about maintaining the road, because our little pool does not cover the cost of that ongoing, it would even, even come close to covering any cost to maintaining the road in that long construction cycle, whatever that may be. And Scott did step up the plate, but I want to make sure that it's up front and everybody's aware that arises when those size trucks come down. And then make sure, now that's a, it was a private road before, and he always took care of the plowing and took care of his driveway, and now it's a Shaw Road extension, I just asked that he would continue that way, that would take care of his plowing, because he has his own plow guys. My social, my pool guy, Chris, does not go down his driveway, because he doesn't probably want, he wants his own person to plow his own driveway, which he does on a regular basis. So that's why I put the other suggestion in there, that he continue doing the same thing, because that's the way he's done it, and that everybody would have the same agreement and upfront that would continue that way. Because that was Shaw Road, and my liable, now am I taking care of my own, am I spending more money to take care of his, basically his driveway in front of his house? That makes any, that 385 feet, am I liable now to take care of his own, now his drive, is, was a driveway, now it's a road? And the last thing I just thought about recently, and it's not a big thing, but he's probably already thought of it, since I haven't seen him, I haven't asked him about it, he has a granite 10-to-12-foot gate across his driveway. It was his driveway. Now it's not his driveway, it's next to Mr. Joe, Joe Curran's, dispatch Joe Curran's house, which is 90 or 93, whatever it is. He has an oak gate across the driveway, he leaves open all the time, but it can be closed. Now that it is Shaw Road extension, which is an easement and access to the public and emergency vehicles, I would assume he'd be moving that gate more into his driveway, either one house or the other. But no, that hasn't even been brought up, that we have an oak gate now on middle of Shaw Road, not on the front of Shaw Road, but in the middle, in the last 385 feet, we have an oak gate with granite pillars, which he's probably already thought of, but I have not even had a chance to talk to him. That's all, I've said, what is logistics, what is the consideration of that oak gate for our emergency vehicles, snowplows, and so forth and so on. That's all, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
My name's Joe Curran. We have bought the property we're talking about here, and I'm just curious to know, who owns Shaw Road?
Who owns Shaw Road?
Yeah.
I don't know, we can, I don't know, but we can find out for you.
I think it's multiple parties.
Is it private road?
Yes.
So it's probably owned by shared ownership by lot owners?
I have no idea, I'm asking you. Now, if he extends it, is that public? Can we drive down there? Like everybody drives in front of my house and, I mean, I don't know, I'm just curious.
I, I don't know. It's, we can find out for you, but I don't know, we'll have an answer. So you're interested to know, are you on Shaw Road?
Yes.
Well, who owns your road?
Beats the hell out of me, I don't know.
Do you contribute to a, to a-
An informal, yeah, we have an informal association to plow the road, okay? But that's nothing legal, we just do it as neighbors.
Was it, was it originally set up as a subdivision?
No.
No.
It was not?
No. I bet you that road is probably owned individually.
Yeah, like if you look at the plans as provided by Owen Haskell, it does show that portions of the road are owned by different entities. So most of them own to the center line or just over, and essentially, it's a glorified easement to cross all those properties as a private road.
So, and this is a guess, but my guess is, since the way, since it was not a subdivision set up, that each of the individual lot owners owns the section of that road in front of them. And there is, and there's an easement that is set up to get the road frontage for the building permit. That would be, that's a guess.
So anybody can go across that easement? I mean, that's not a problem. So if he extends it, then we can go into his property?
Well-
Which, which, I don't agree with, but I'm just asking the question.
It's a good ques- Chris, you, is this the lawyer answer? Uh-oh. Uh-oh, okay. All right, Chris, we only got five minutes for the lawyer answer.
I'll do it last. First of all, to your question, sir, about who owns Shaw Road, I think the chairman had it right. In this situation, you literally have to look at every deed of every lot, see how it came out, different people drafted deeds different ways, it could be a hogwash. I'm sure every lot down there has an easement to use it. I know my client has an easement to use Shaw Road. It's a private easement. And I don't know who owns the road, I know my client has a right to use it. I will want to clarify one point, which is this thing that's being called Shaw Road Extension will not be a public road. It's a private road. We're seeking a private road extension. So I want to be clear to everyone in the neighborhood, as it relates to your comments on the gate, sir, it's still a private road.
And there's no movement of the gate, it's just-
And to, and to the first gentleman's points, we're happy to accept the condition of approval that the Maxwells repair any damage to the road during any construction of this or any other project. I think you heard, they really want to step up. And in respect to who's going to maintain this section of road, not the town, not the informal association, the deed requires the owners of these two lots to maintain the road. So there'll be no obligations on anyone, the town, the neighborhood, or anyone else as a result of this.
Thanks, Chris.
Could I just ask, what's the difference between his private road and our private road?
He has an easement, he, he has an easement to go, to drive over that, that-
Portion.
That portion of the private road, just like I'm sure if you are not-
No, I understand, no, I understand that.
Okay.
It's not a problem, I just don't understand why he has a private road, and we have a private road, but we can't go on his road, but he can go on our road.
Because he has an easement to drive over the existing road, you don't have an easement in your deed to drive over his road.
His portion of the road.
His portion of the road.
So why are we here? I don't understand.
It's a legality for, he has to have a certain amount of road frontage to have a legal lot.
Yeah, but it's still, it's a driveway, when you really talk about it, at the end of the story.
Well, when you put it to a right away-
Nobody else can use it, so you know.
Well, there are certain implied public rights to use it, for a fire, for post office, or-
Well, you can do that anywhere.
Right, right, but I mean, it's, it's a, it's a legality and it's required.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Just a question.
Mr. Chair, at one-
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I love to public speaker, there's more.
No, I think, did you want to speak?
You're done?
Yeah. Yes. Did you want to say, I'm sorry, it looked like you wanted to say, yes. No, okay.
Well, I do.
You do?
All right, I-
If you do, I have to ask you to go up to the podium.
Oh, do it.
You do, because we got to get you on camera.
All right, I'm on.
And we do that to discourage people from talking.
Yeah, yeah, okay, fine.
All right, are you sure? Do you have a question that we could answer for you?
No, you can't answer.
Okay. All right, is anybody else that would like to speak? All right, and we'll close the portion of the public hearing. Good, Jim.
Just one comment, on the, on the gate, if the gate is going to remain there, it wasn't discussed in the application, but if it's going to remain there, I'm sure the fire department will want a Knox box on that if it's going to remain closed, or they have to relocate it to the-
After the-
After the hammerhead.
Right.
I mean, because it does allow them to have access in there in case of a fire or a medical emergency.
Yep.
Yeah.
Back to the application. So we are looking at the Shaw Road extension, the private road extension, and we're on page 27 and 54, I believe, right Jim, with the Article 7 of the minor subdivision?
Yeah, what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to hand out, just guide you a little bit here.
Oh, fantastic.
The findings of fact, I think it's easy to follow. My draft is four, five.
Chris, you okay with the Knox box? We're on the gate, it's closed.
Didn't include that in the condition.
No, we're happy, we're happy to include that, the next one, we're required to relocate the gate if the law can, I have no idea if and when they even close it.
Okay. So I think it's kind of laid out there, like the items that you need to look at, it's the standard site plan review standards. And then I also have on the back, four recommended conditions. One is a little bit- Chris, you okay with the Knox box? We're on the gate.
Absolutely.
Didn't include that in the.
No, we're happy to have the condition. We have the condition that the next one, where the fire chief can relocate the gate if the lot is, I have no idea if and when they even close it.
Okay. So I think it's kind of laid out there, like the items that you need to look at, it's the standard site plan review standards. And then I also have on the back, four recommended conditions. One is a little bit, sounds a little bit strange, but it's the last one, D, where you don't have it before you, but I just assume have it in the condition that if they're going to have this cross driveway, it needs to be an easement for rights in the event that something happens, whether they, I'm sure they're not planning to sell it anytime soon or lose the lot, but if it were, you'd have to have the rights for one to have access rights over the other.
Okay.
It's just a protection thing and it's pretty meaningless at this point, but down the line it may have bearing. And then you'd want to add your.
Can I just clarify? You're talking about the, the new connecting driveway?
Yeah, yeah. There should be, I mean, what happens if, and I know they'd have no plans of ever selling this, but if they should, you know, you'd have a driveway that didn't have any impaired rights to go over the other one.
Yeah, it'd be too bad. You'd have to drive to the line and then have to stop.
Right, right. So it's just to kind of protect the, down the line. That's all. And then we'd have the E to.
I think you're, I think you're, you're talking about two different things.
What?
Your A is talking about rights to Shaw Road. I think the applicant was talking about that other connective driveway.
We were talking about the other, the driveway you haven't seen yet.
Jim, why don't you go through the, the four conditions for us? And then we will go back.
All right, the four conditions that I recommend were, one, the applicant provide and executed and recorded common maintenance agreement for the private road. I think you've heard, and that could be worked out with you and the association as far as who's doing what, where, and maintenance and all that and plowing.
Are we talking about the private road extension?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already in the deed that the Maxwells are going to maintain it. They have an obligation. So I'm not, you're talking about getting an agreement with the whole neighborhood?
I'm talking about getting, are you part of the association?
There is no association.
There is no association.
Well, you've got a.
It's an informal group. It's not a legal construct.
Okay.
I don't see anything, I mean.
I don't see any change there.
If I read your ordinance, it requires a road maintenance agreement for the private road extension.
Right.
That's all. And there is one in the deed that says the owners are going to maintain this. Each of them is jointly and severally liable to maintain the private road.
In the past, we've asked to have that notarized so that we know that it was executed and they're bound by that agreement. Because we, we get drafts, but we never see them executed.
Right, but what are we changing here?
It's in the deed that I've given to Jim that will be signed and notarized.
Right, do I understand that?
It just needs to be executed, is what this condition, what all that condition is really saying, is if it's in the deed, it just needs to be executed.
Okay, all right. So really the condition, but.
For the new lot.
Sorry.
It has to be for the new lot.
Oh, for the new lot?
Right.
Okay, understood. All right.
Are you clear, clear on that, Chris?
I understand, as I said.
When you execute the deed, we just need a copy of the deed that has that piece in it.
Okay, but that's a little different than what this condition says.
Yeah, I think this is our bullet that we usually use when we want a whole maintenance agreement.
Correct.
But we don't really need that in this particular case. I don't, I don't want to speak for the board, but.
I'd agree with that.
Okay.
Can we just say shall provide an executed.
You need it for that extension.
And recorded agreement?
No, I don't think we need it.
See what you got, hold on a second. We've got, you have an existing lot. They already have in their deed an agreement on how they handle the road in the existing lot.
Right.
But you're creating a new lot.
I understand.
It further overburdens the, the road, so they have to get a new agreement for that piece or a new, or that lot has to enter into some other new agreement.
Jim, the new, the new deed has a new agreement.
Correct, correct. They haven't seen that.
I understand, but they could make that a condition.
Correct, that's what we're.
I just don't want to agree to do something more than what we've done.
Right.
We're not asking to do.
Well, I think, I think there is concern with your, your language saying a private road could be interpreted as the entire.
Correct, it should say the private road.
Say private road extension?
Right, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That's a good clarification, sir.
All right, B.
Can we ask another question?
Let me get through these first.
Okay, B. The applicant shall have a note added to the site plan that states that it is a requirement of the owner to repair any damage to the existing private road created by the construction of the new extension or lot development.
Right.
The app, and C, the applicant prior to completion of the private road extension shall provide proof that the stormwater treatment buffers have been executed and recorded the registry of deeds. The applicant will need for the limited forest and metal buffer limits to be marked by permanent ground markings in the field to be completed prior to home occupancy.
And then D, you've already talked about.
D, we've already talked about.
And I will put that in a revised deed, which I'll get to you.
And then E would be if the gate were to remain, a Knox box per the fire department's specifications would have to be added.
All right. So now I think we can go and run through these, knowing that, and that way I think we'll save some time on these conditions. So we would start with the site plan review standards, number one, the preservation of landscaping.
Yeah.
Yep.
I noticed, and I don't know how this works when you, when you're creating a new lot with Sebel Lake frontage. It appeared to me that there's, the new lot, particularly just would not, it's not meet the point system within the 100 foot. Is that going to be something that staff takes care of, or do you guys even deal with that?
What's that now?
Well, if there's just too many trees, there's not enough trees. If you do the point system on trees within the 100 foot line, the trees that are marked there on one of these, there seem to be way too few trees.
They're not, that is actually going to be considered a metal buffer, not a wooded buffer in there.
Okay.
And they're not clearing anything in there.
Okay. But what happens, I guess what, what, I guess I, this is more of a general question. What happens when a situation where it's a new lot and it doesn't meet the, are they, they're.
It's only required for a wooded.
Right.
It's only on, the different standard for a.
Okay.
Field buffer.
Yeah.
Can't require them to plant trees if there weren't trees there before.
Right.
Which there weren't. They're just not cutting any that are existing. They just aren't there.
At least that was my understanding.
Right. You can't ask, you can't ask them to plant what they don't have, unless they previously cut them down.
Right, it's don't.
Yeah, just, I mean, the DEP, Jim, got me, they have different requirements on the shoreline area for forest, actually they call it, or wooded versus meadow.
Okay.
And probably three quarters of the frontage is a meadow. They're not going to, they're going to leave it just the way it's been for a long time.
So in 50 years, that could become a forested buffer, I guess.
Lots of.
They can go in, there's, there's restrictions and I've given them the language, there is, they can go in and mow it once a year, just to knock it down so that, you know, it doesn't get out of control, but that's about all they can do.
Okay.
It has to stand a certain height and everything.
I think actually it says once or twice, no more than twice.
No more than twice a year, I think, is what you can, so.
It used to be once and they changed it to no more than twice a year.
Because people go in in the spring and then they'll go back in the fall and cut it down again.
Okay. And the other, I, I think that, I don't think we need individual votes as we go through here. I think we'll just use the bullets as, just to act our discussion and keep and steer us through the review. So the, the first in the preservation of landscaping, the applicant notes preservation of the natural tree buffers adjacent to the westernmost driveway offshore road. And we're going to need to clear it, land for tree removal for the purpose of meeting the stormwater treatment. And again, we're again on the road. Not on the property.
Right, right. Well, they're using the points on the property, but it's for the benefit of the road as well. I mean, they're meeting it off of the entire lot.
But it does meet the points. Didn't I say like 55 points?
For the stormwater, yes.
The stormwater?
Yeah. That's what happens a lot of time on these private roads. You just don't have enough room on the private road, so they end up having to go into the lot to get the points.
Yeah, almost never.
Never, exactly. That's the pitfall of the point system.
Yeah. On the relation to proposed buildings to the environment, you guys stop me when you The setting of the single family home will be in conformance of the limited residential recreational two zone. That's really not us for this project, is it? I mean, it's nice to know, but it's.
Yeah. I mean, it's the purpose for the road going in.
Vehicular, I'm sorry, Ben. Vehicular access? I think that's taken care of, and I heard that the turnaround, the grading of the turnaround has been.
It's been revised, yep, to 5% to meet the.
Fire department's happy?
Yes.
Okay. Parking and circulation?
I do have a question about that. It actually relates by the number three or number nine. If we're going to have the Hammerhead, shouldn't it be gravelled to the same extent as the road development?
It is.
Okay. It doesn't appear to be shown on the drawing, at least this drawing, I'm looking at that way.
It will have to be.
Okay.
It's a requirement. It's part of the right of way. It has to be all brought to the same.
If you can just make that change on the drawing, good.
Yep. And I've asked them to include that radius return and everything, so they do have, they do know, they have to touch that up on the, on the hammer.
Okay, all right.
Are we on three or four?
Well, we're on, I just got this thing, I just wanted to make sure. Was there a road construction plan here?
Yes.
The what? Okay, so what I saw. All right, so we're on four. Parking and circulation, adequate parking areas of both driveway to serve future home Service water drainage. So this is 65 points?
Yes. The new, the new revisions of today were 65 points.
Okay.
They're required to have 50.
And that report we've received.
They've updated it, but you have received the original one.
Okay. Utilities?
All the utilities will be underground and they have provided, now again, not that it's your review, what they have provided is evidence that they can put a subsurface wastewater system in for the lot.
Special features?
Again, the only thing I put in there was the 5% for the turnaround, and they've addressed that.
Exterior lighting?
No lighting was proposed for street lighting, just the typical residential outdoor lighting.
Okay. Emergency vehicle access?
Knowing what we know tonight, we'll put in about the Knox box.
Okay. And landscaping?
Again, none is provided, I mean, it's a, it's a.
And none required for the stormwater.
Right.
Okay. And other considerations or our standard?
They provide an erosion control plan as well, so.
So the board takes a moment to look through this. Did you, did we answer your question, or do you still have one?
He did, but I have one quick one.
Go ahead, Ed.
The trees that buffer between my property and his property, can they be cut down? Can they?
Let me see where your property is here.
Right next to it.
You are. Get the right stamp here that has your name on it. He has no, that is, it's not within the buffer, but he has not shown that that would be cut. So I mean, that's. It's narrowed down through there. There's really not a whole lot of buffer on that side because it's not down gradient of the, of the driveway. But I mean, that, it's not restricted by anything the board's doing. That could be in agreement with the two lot owners, but I don't think he has any visions of cutting that so far away from the home.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
One quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Kind of, kind of jumps backward, back to your conditions of approval, A. On the, on the issue of rights to access, with this extension, and I guess there's a Kern, there are, there's a Kern family here. It looks like Joseph and Evelyn Kern own the lot above.
Correct.
This extension?
Correct.
Are they blocked then from ever tying into this extension?
They have rights. If you look before that, there's a 25 foot right of way, which goes up the side to benefit them.
They don't have any rights on the Maxwell property?
They don't have any on the Maxwell property, but they have 25 foot right of way for that.
So if they want to do anything, they have to come down to that right of way and tie into Shaw Road there.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless they negotiate something separately with Mr. Maxwell later.
And there's no other lot owner that would be affected by this?
Just Kern.
Okay.
Chris, is the trail that's shown on the plot here, is that trail part of a trail system, or is it just a standalone trail? That's going to be revegetated?
I don't believe so. I think it's just a trail that existed within the property.
It's actually an old, it was an old road of some sort.
I made that.
My guess, without knowing, and I defer to these apparently longtime residents, the area is so developed that there couldn't be a trail system very easily.
I made that with Dean Shaw in San Pae. We did a thumb trucking bulldozer with Mr. Robinson 44 years ago.
But the answer to your question, no, it's not.
So it's.
But that brings up one.
Mr. Chair, that brings up one other point.
In the buffer language, we did discuss and recommend, because of the access to the beach, that we allowed them for a six foot natural path to have access through the buffer to get to the beach.
Which, yeah, and where is that going to go?
That'll be, it's up to them where they determine. I mean, it's a natural surface path. It just gives them the right to cross the buffer in an area.
To be honest with you, it's never going to be built. It's hard to explain it without being there, but this is a field with very sandy soil and it just, stuff doesn't grow like it would say out in with rich soil.
Yep.
And you can walk to the beach in any one of 100, 200 feet of the frontage, so they're not going to build a path.
Right.
They have no desire to build a path, a gravel pass, anything like that.
It just gives them the rights to access through the buffer.
Just gives them the right to cross it, and in the event some future owner wanted to build something more path-like, as opposed to just walking across a meadow.
Yeah. So where are we envisioning this?
It isn't, it's just a typical DEP condition, if the owner at some point wants to develop a path.
Right.
It's possible with limits, and it's, the Maxwells aren't going to do it.
Nope.
Yeah, we've already added it to the buffer language already.
Okay, all right. Is there any other comments, questions? Yeah, we're going to group it all together. Danielle's already warming up the car, by the way, so...
This gravel drive, that goes off to...
Which gravel?
Coming off partway down their driveway, there's just another...
It's just another, yeah, just forks and goes over to the other lot, goes over to the proposed lot?
No, right here.
Oh, that, that's the, yeah, that just goes me and just through their lot, right?
Doesn't go to any other, Zulz's lot or anything else?
No, no.
Okay.
No, as I showed you in that first picture, it's all standalone. They own...
Okay, I just want, it's just, when you put gravel drive, I mean, it's just kind of...
It's their baja.
You made that one, too? Fifty cents a yard? Plus tax? It's been way more enjoyable planning boards. Well, what do we say? Any deterrents? I move that we accept the site plan review standards. This is one amendment. Four, four conditions of approval?
Five.
Five conditions of approval.
Second.
For the proposed Shaw Road extension.
From Maxwell property.
Sounds good.
No exception.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Done. Five zero.
I'll finalize this when they have the MyLars, so you can sign it.
Okay, thanks, Chris. All right, are there any planning communications?
We will have, next month you'll have a couple of staff reviews coming forward, but they haven't been finalized yet.
Yeah, gentlemen, we still do have a meeting.
Oh, sorry.
For a second.
For a little bit of time, at any rate. All right, so we've got the planning, finding of facts, passing down, we need signatures. The black pen, if you've got a black pen, Danielle's.
This is Riley.
That's Riley, but I mean, they still got to come in with the MyLars anyway, so...
No, we have to approve the finding of facts with the next board meeting.
Well, we could...
What do you think?
I could add it on here, I could pencil it in, then you could just sign it, and that's the only, it's just that other condition.
The reason is, obviously, like a lot of others, people want to get going.
Yeah, I understand that, well...
How long until you do anything out of the ordinary then?
Lots out of the ordinary.
When's your next meeting?
Not for a month. May 12th.
Was there anything that needs to go on those, the conditions?
Possibly the notes.
Well, we'll put it this way, I don't, I don't think we should do it tonight because we don't do them tonight, but if you do want it earlier when it's, when it's ready and the conditions are on it and Jim gives the okay, I think the board can easily swing by the town and sign individually.
Thank you, we do that sometimes, too.
Yeah.
So, I'll work with Jim on exactly what conditions you want added to this.
I think you've got them, but we'll go over them and just make sure...
The ones that are on...
The condition, then, just the Knox box is the only other one.
Someone will write that up, would you send it to me?
Absolutely.
We'll put that on there?
Yep.
Are you going to have separate ones that go on the site plan?
They'll be, you just have...
But they don't sign the site plan?
I know they don't sign it, but I meant as far as getting the permitting and all that stuff.
Well, he has your plans.
I understand.
And if he needs to revise them, you will.
I'm going to grab my easel for it and go.
We're hoping you forget that. All right, is there any other, Jim, you're all set?
I'm all set.
Is there any other business on the board?
Move your turn.
Second.
All in favor? Close, done.